Well, sure, yeah. Mr. President, make a motion come out of executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42-46, 5, subsection 82. Sessions obtained in collective bargaining litigation. Contract negotiations with Par Corporation. Please let the record show that no votes were taken and to seal the minutes. That's a motion I'll do the one for separately.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Soski, second by Councilwoman Nato, Councilwoman Sole, Councilwoman Als. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
Yes. I don't know before discussion by Councilwoman Soski on contract negotiations carried corporation. And that's me.
Mr. President, the last meeting we came in, it was unanimous to approve funding of $5,000 for appraisal of the old property. After that meeting and...
Yeah, you have to be on the other end.
Oh, so sorry, so sorry. You're right. That's the next one. Okay. Just an update. Last meeting I did talk about, we had a contract amendment submitted dated March 30th. It includes hours for both finalizing bid documents as well as, as well as construction, I'm sorry. Construction services. I'd like to have this redone. There are two things. The first thing is it includes hours to complete the contract documents. I'm a little bit different from what I told you earlier. I'd like to request the ability to have hours and fees paid out of Phase Two construction services to complete the Phase One construction documents. Total of those fees should not exceed $3,000. What that means is Par has completed the documents. There was insufficient funds in there, Phase One of the original contract. I'm asking that we take money from the Phase Two and move it into the design. So that way there's no change in contract prices, in the original contract.
And you said not to exceed 3,000?
About 3,000. It's about $3,000.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by the Chair to do this stuff. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
Yes. The second part of this is it is a contract amendment for bid services. This item is specifically listed as by supplemental agreement in the original contract. And Par has submitted a proposal for that. And because it's going to be edited and altered, I'm asking that the town council approve authorization to have the contract amendment for bid services submitted by Par, signed upon review and approval by the PBIC. Total CA shall now exceed $7,000.
So moved. Amended at 7,575, so we have $1,000.
Seven.
7,575. Just so we have that $1,000, just to be clear.
And just a clarification, what the contract amendment is, that's so that they can send somebody to a pre-bid service. Once the bids do come in, they will do a bid review, they'll analyze it, they'll tell us that the contractor has responded appropriately to the bids and make a recommendation as to who the contractor should be to take on the task of construction.
So you have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Nato, second by the Chair to appropriate 7,575, no more than 7,575 dollars and also provide advanced authorization. Is that correct?
Right. It's, it's, once we get this final document and the PBIC looks at it, we'd like to get it signed and over to Par right away rather than waiting two weeks for the council again.
So this is also to the advanced authorization?
Right.
So it's 7,575 dollars up to and also provide the PBIC with the advanced authorization for the contract, for the authorization there. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
I do have a question on it. The first one was easy because we're just going to move money through the existing contract and we can work with Jason on that. This is obviously a contract amendment, will need signature. Is, I don't know if it just goes adjacent to sign at this point or?
Make a motion to...
We can make a motion to have town administrator sign upon approval of the PBIC.
Right, and that's what we're looking for, so once...
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als.
I'm sorry, is that acting town administrator?
Acting.
Acting, so acting.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
I do have a question on it. The first one was easy because we're just going to move money through the existing contract and we can work with Jason on that. This is obviously a contract amendment, will need signature. Is, I don't know if it just goes adjacent to sign at this point or?
Make a motion to...
We can make a motion to have town administrator sign upon approval of the PBIC.
Right, and that's what we're looking for, so once...
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als.
I'm sorry, is that acting town administrator?
Acting.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als.
I'm sorry, is that acting town administrator?
Acting.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
One last thing is, like I said, we do have a final document, contract document for the roads. The only things that remain left blank are dates as to when we're going to start this. So pending a review of the PBIC approval, we can have all those dates put in this week. Again, review and approval by the PBIC board. We'd like to have advance approval of the contract documents for the road improvement bond pending PBIC approval to be used for advertising for construction. Basically, PBIC says this is good on Monday night. We'd like to get that out in the paper on Wednesday and Thursday of next week.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by the Chair to...
Wait, let me...
I'm sorry, wait a second.
Advertise where? In Province Journal, Boston Globe and...
No, not Globe. The Journal. You could do the call. I think, I mean, basically all you really need is the Journal and the call and the breeze. These are going to be road contractors, it's going to be Eucardine, Lynch, Deambro. They'll be reading the...
The locals?
Well, Projo anyway.
Okay. All right, so moved.
What you wanted to wish to telegram is that?
I mean, you can, I don't know...
Uxbridge is right next door.
I mean, there's a lot of local contractors. I mean, I just named three, but yeah, Manafort, you've got...
All right, and this was asking if you wanted scope, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, motion in a second. Would that also require Jason's signature on any of this either or?
I think it's just, no, it's just advertising.
Just advertising, okay.
You're basically, you're just putting, we're saying to PBIC to say this is good, it has the proper dates which Jason will be part of, and get it advertised. So, once we start getting bids, there's always a, an amendment phase anyway, so if there's an error or something, clarification, that comes out during the amendment.
So you have a motion in a second. The clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
Joe, can you give that wording to Madam Clerk, so she has it for the minutes?
Yeah, I'll go back and write it because she'll read my chicken scratch.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President? I think I have a motion to move up agenda item 11, business B, discussion by Councilwoman Soski on the action, which is...
I'll second. If you want to make a call for another one, I'm going to settle.
Amendment what?
The deed.
All the papers there?
Aye.
Mrs. Kent, now again, how are you doing?
Good. So we are asking that we can register the highway garage as a site for the mattress recycling council to bring a container. The mattress laws have changed and we're going to be accepting them at no charge at the highway garage, but they have to stay dry. So with the new legislation starting May 1st, people now when you purchase a mattress, there's going to be a disposal cost of $10 per piece. That allows, that's going to cover all the recycling costs of the mattress. So we want to have a container at the garage, residents can drop it off, no charge, and then we have Ace Mattress Recycling coming to pick it up. And recycling is at no charge to the town. So we need to just sign the agreement and say that we can register the town administration bill. Did you see that agreement or, did anyone see that? Basically, we can say we do not want to be a site within 10 days notification of the mattress recycling council.
I think that's fantastic, I go, it costs a pound, anything.
So, it's going to be paid for when you purchase a mattress through this mattress recycling council.
Right, that's true.
Yep. And they're going to be recycled.
Right, and it stops illegal dumping, if you look at what's going on down Canal Street, it's disgusting.
Well, we clean that up over Earth Day, so it's a lot better.
I haven't been over there in a couple of weeks.
It was a town, but...
All the water and everything?
Some of it.
As much as you can pump.
It gets into the water, but a lot of it was taken care of over...
That's right.
Different moves since that from everybody else. So, you will be signing this?
Right, so, so moved. And add authorization for acting town administrator to sign.
Motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by Councilwoman Als. Any further discussion? Hearing the matter of the clerk, please.
Ms. Als, yes, Mrs. Nato, Mr. Sole, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Boucher.
Thank you, Madam.
I have the number seven. Discussion by Council, go to their action on consideration of walking, doubting appraisal of the property, Mr. Zelensky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to stop by, just go reiterating what we had spoken about the last meeting. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Erickson, by mistake, I'm going to speak from your memo on March 28. The bottom sentence, among other things, says that we can submit an application of Rhode Island Department by May 27th deadline, but the town should not waste time on your credibility pursuing the grant, or the town should, and I want to echo that I said, no, we shouldn't. Now, who's going to write that? Who's going to apply for that grant? Is that going to be you?
No.
No, who?
I would suggest that you take the $5,000 and hire a grant writer. That has been on the budget in the past and it was taken away.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you finish it? Do you suggestion we should hire a grant writer?
Yes.
Okay. You had a conversation with Dr. Shumlee this week, Land Trust, and you inquired if a grant had been written previously?
Yes.
One has been, it should be in your office. I've got 20 something pages of minutes here. Let's start on, geez, August 4th, 2008, and terminate February 17th, 2009. I think it covers everything in here. In these minutes, you'll see that the previous town president, Mr. Phillips, had submitted a grant. So if you could find that, whomever's going to write this grant would make it a lot more palatable and easy for them to write.
Although the format has changed considerably.
Information's there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I can see the format changes, but the germane information should be there. Now, when you spoke with us the other night, I must tell you that I had an individual approach me after the meeting, I had two phone calls the next day. Folks are not in favor, I'm in favor, but I'll make this clear, that I was always in favor until two lots were pulled away from the town, two lots were envisioned for parking vehicles. Now, the previous application had plat 10, lot 218, plat 14, lot 107, plat 14, 208, plat 14, 254, there were four parcels of land that were involved in this. When you spoke, and my main concern, I believe Councilwoman Nato broached the subject, are we going to have access? And I think that you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that could be negotiated, access and easement access could be negotiated?
Actually, if you look very closely at the wetlands, which are delineated on the proposed subdivision plan, the concept plan, and then you look on the town GIS, which is accessible through the town website, and you run up the wetlands, there is a very good access from Maddy Road up the southwest side of the Gold House property, and then to the back of that field. There's a very large field there where you could have gravel parking in part and extended special event parking over the grass field.
So, south and west, is that proximity to the rail line, the abandoned rail line?
It is, yeah, it is basically, but you don't need the rail line in order to, the rail line property, because it's on that side of the house.
Okay, so, you have to forgive me, I'm kind of a paper plant type person, I'd like to see large sets of plans to look at this and lay it out. So, I know that maybe some people are definitely looking at a 22-inch screen and moving it, and I mean, I'd like to see a large plan. Do you have the plans from the previous application in your office?
We probably do.
Okay.
The problem is that it's not the same land that was offered to you before. So the question is, do you want to pursue the additional parcels, or is this sufficient at the lower price, because it does have parking, potential parking area?
Well, you know, without seeing this, I'm a visual person, I have to see it, so without seeing it, I do want to pursue this, but I want to make sure that people aren't parking on the roadways, I mean, they have to be able to get in, they're not within wetlands. So, do you have the plans?
Here, I'll give you this one. We are about to get a large standard of water, but we can't go more than 11 to 17 right now. Kate, go in here from Maddy Road, and go around, this would be the part of the property.
Okay, so basically this is...
So actually, Lumber Hill Road right here, right?
Where is the gold?
It's from Maddy, Maddy runs this way, Lumber Hill runs this way.
So where's?
Here.
This, this lot right there is Gold's property.
Gold's house.
Also, so you're saying it's going to be the, to the west or left of it?
That's right.
And that's where the rail line is, or is it a little further east of the rail?
But the, the point is that when you do a purchase and sale, if you get that far, you want to make sure that delineation makes it clear that there is enough space, because this is based on 1990 orthophoto infrared, and the interpretation of that can be less or small, less or more than what's shown on the map. So that's the trick. It looks great now, it's probably a little bit less in some areas, a little bit more in others.
Okay, so, but you're basically saying that, do we have to negotiate this? Is this another piece of property or even? I'd rather just buy it outright, not an easement, have it for the town.
No, that's not easement, that's part of, that's part of the parcel over here.
Of 218?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's inclusive. Okay, so then the last time when we had this conversation, you said that we would have to negotiate, because Councilwoman Nato asked that, and you said we'd have to negotiate for an easement.
So if you wanted, if you wanted any larger form or other form of access, you would have to negotiate for an easement. And they're willing to do that, but I want, I want to make it clear that this has floodplains and wetlands.
Oh, yeah.
And you're going to have to delineate it on the ground, and I talked to the, I talked to the real estate agent, and they seem to be amenable to that, that you don't make any purchase without that being very clear that you have complete access.
Okay, so I articulated my concern about access. Now, you just said you suggested that we should have a professional grant writer go out and write this. I think in the planning office, and it's not you, hopefully it was retained by the person before you, all that information should be there. I know they're going to go in, walk it, ensure it, do whatever they have to do. I just want to make sure that this goes properly, it's a lot of money for the town. So, if the town were to go ahead and say, yeah, we're going to spend a 1.6 million on this, and suppose the grant doesn't come through, is this the gamble we take? The $400,000?
Well, you're not in any obligation to buy it, I mean...
Well, I thought there was a deadline to submit the grant.
May 27th. But this town council is not going to be the one who ultimately decides to purchase the property. If, if this town council said, we don't want it, then we're wasting our time doing the grant application, all right? And I never saw the point, although it came pretty quickly last time, of doing an appraisal, because you don't need to do the appraisal before you make the submission.
Oh, okay. So I want to make this, so then there's no rush to go out and have an appraise for the submission?
Yeah, but there is a rush to get the grant writer to actually do it, yeah. And Ray has his own project, you know, the house down by the front of the Tico Park?
Did you say Ray?
Ray, Dave Pendigas?
Oh, okay. Just for the record, I want to make sure we have the names.
Yes, Dave Pendigas, the head of the DPW, would like to acquire that property, which is a kind of tilted house.
Yes.
And make an access out and, you know, entrance in. Those are very limited lanes, you can't do cars both ways. So, if we can do that, that would be a competing grant with the one that we would do for Gold.
Okay, and Mr. Pendigas is going to write that grant, do you know?
No, he's not, that's going for getting a grant writer.
Okay.
The, the staff in planning is writing the comp plan, which cost, which you went outside for last time and spent $47,000 on, all right? So we're not spending that one. You have to take a choice.
I'm glad you brought that up, okay. So, in essence, now you also talked about Carcun Pond, you said the pound north of it's Carcun Pond, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there was a concern with MS4 fecal, coliform?
Well, they use, they use enterococcus as a, as a tracer for fecal, but you're used to hearing it as fecal, that's fine, that's the problem with that pond. And if you had a, if you had control of the property, you would be able to swale it and do whatever is necessary. If you didn't have control and you had septic systems there, ultimately you would add even more. If we purchased this, it would do us well with DEM and MS4, because we have to have methods of reducing that overload.
Okay, by looking at this, this plat 10, lot 218, it looks like the only residence on it is the Gold, but if you go up Douglas Pike, there are other residences.
No, I'm sorry, the, the property is not, is a separate parcel. The Gold House property is a separate parcel. 218 has no houses on it.
Okay, yes, you are right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Erickson. So, by purchasing this, it's going to help the town with MS4, or are we more liable for it? Because right now, we don't know, are we responsible for that?
Responsible for what?
For any, what's we call, high fecal coliform or?
Well, you have to have a plan in your program with the state. That would help. It's not a visa alone for buying.
Okay.
I'm just trying to look at multiple...
That would be a problem, that we would have to take care of regardless?
Yes, that's what I wanted to hear, thanks, thank you, Council. All right, I think that pretty much answers my, my questions now. Do you have an appraisal company or someone in mind that, someone that's, I'll come right up to the public and say this, last time there was appraisals, they got very convoluted because of mineral rights. The town's not going to be buying this for mineral rights, we're going to be buying it for open space and enjoyment, passive recreation. And of course, Mr. Gold would have to, you know, let people on the property, it gets, I'm sure he would. I'm just concerned that we get the right appraisal, and I'm not saying to them, it's going to factor in, I'm sure Mr. Gold would want it to factor in, I don't want it to factor in mineral rights, I'm looking at open space. So do you have an appraisal company that's going to work?
Well, normally we would use Kelly Flanagan.
Okay, that was, that was, yeah, absolutely.
I can't tell you that an appraiser will not factor in the clause of the peculiar relationship of subdivision to extractions in this town and in history of this town. I can't tell you that a appraiser can't do that, they have to do what they have to do.
Okay, I'm pretty sure at this point that you've had, you've had dialogue with Mr. Gold and will continue to have dialogue with Mr. Gold. Are you the alpha, are you the lead on this for the town?
Well, I'm the, basically the person that Mr. Gold is wanting to talk to, yeah.
Yeah, you brought it forward, okay, no, in a bad way. I spoke to Mr. Gold two months ago on a certain issue too, I don't think he's a, it's personally me and Paul. So I guess I would really like to know about the access, the easement, the negotiable part of that, could you handle that for the town? Do you think that you could have that conversation with Mr. Gold?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, here's the problem, can you have this delineated? And it probably costs him five or $600, and that will solve the problem.
Okay. With that being said, and that you're going to address that, and Council, any Council have any other...
I have a couple of questions. Councilwoman Soski, you mentioned that this wasn't the original agreed lots, there are multiple lots?
Yes.
How many, how many total lots were the original?
There were three other lots, if you want to write them down, I have to.
Yeah, you could, yes.
Okay, this one is plat 10, 218, the one that's being contemplated right now. There was also plat 14, lot 007, plat 14, lot 008, plat 14, lot 254. Councilwoman Sole, I did this by back in 12 minutes from that time period. I don't have the plains in front of me and I don't have the purchase and sales agreement, that would be in the planning office. So really, to verify those lots would be the best thing to do is look at the purchases. Can we get a copy of that original?
Yes, I have.
My question is, what was the, so the original agreed price was, was 2.2 million back in 2000?
2.8 million.
Or 2.8 million back in 2000?
And that was for 154 acres.
Okay, so...
This is 1.6 million for 124 acres.
So we're losing about 30...
Well, it measures out at the 154, if you're getting 123 out of the 154, forget development or whatever, it would be about 2.3 million and now it's going to be 116.
One more time, Mr. Erickson, what did you just say?
Okay, 154 acres at 2.8 is equivalent to 123 at 2.3, it's just a simple math, you know. But, but I'm not factoring in the fact that some places have frontage, some places have houses. The real estate person thought this was the best offering for the town, because this is what they really need. You don't want to be in the housing business, I mean, be on the land.
I do. So let's have a review of here, I have a question. For, we would have to purchase this with a bond, an open space bond, correct? What would bond council require in the way of an appraisal? We can get an appraisal and say, I want you to appraise it as if it were anything, a skate park. And we can, we can tell an appraiser how we want it appraised, and that's what they do, because we pay them. But bond council would require something else, or the people that actually float the bonds, financial people behind it, would actually require some sort of appraisal on it, right?
I don't have an answer to that, I'm not so sure, and I'm a little concerned that maybe bond council might not even want an appraisal. Bond council is really...
would actually require some sort of appraisal on it, right?
I don't have an answer to that. I'm not so sure, and I'm a little concerned that maybe bond counsel might not even want an appraisal. Bond counsel is really dealing with the financial aspect. Who's gonna want an appraisal? It would be you.
Right.
To determine if this is worth 1.6 million dollars. And if, if it's worth 1.6 million dollars, and if an appraisal comes in, it says it's worth 1.6 million dollars, that it's highest and best used, you may say, "Well, that's not, that's not what you wanted to praise that." You wanted to praise it open space.
Right.
And will this guy accept money or a price at open space? But I mean, I mean, does it...
Right, exactly, that's what I wanted to say.
That is, that's actually my concern, is that there, I mean, we think about a piece of property of this size, there could be multiple uses for that property, thus, for its different value for different people. For open spaces, to me, open space wouldn't get the same value as a developer would get if they wanted to develop on it. And that, that's my concern with, between the ask and price and getting an appraisal for it. And that's why I agreed to the appraisal last time, was I want to make sure what we're buying it for is what the value of it is for.
Right, we can ask for an appraisal of open space, because if we're paying the appraiser, they're working for us and doing what we say. If we ask for the mineral rights and everything, then they want to give us that or highest and best use, that's a totally different thing. But they wouldn't have to give it to us. So it's, it's not the same as a normal real estate deal, because it's a bond?
Right, the, the bond counsel is just the financing agent. They're, they're just gonna make sure that our, that we're gonna pay it back.
That's it.
And that they're gonna sell those bonds out in the open market. They don't, it's not a, the bond isn't secured by the real estate.
Situation, okay.
We're the, we're the collateralists in the bond. The town of North Smithfield is the collateral of the market. So if I may continue one. We have to remove a possible $400,000 grant. That's not a given. So Dan asked for 1.6 million dollars for property that does not have legal frontage. So there are no other uses for this property, so don't lose sight of that. Without legal frontage, nothing else can be done.
You may, you may... On what? That's a terrible...
How, where?
Legal frontage on Matity Road.
All right, so how, what's the, what's...
The problem is, there's, that, that section, that section is partly wet and is floodplowed, all right? It is still legal frontage. You can measure it. The other test of legal frontage is, does it have access in fact? And there is a park there that I just showed you, that you can go through the road to the back lot for parking. The distinction is that you have to have both legal frontage and access in fact in Rhode Island, unless it's for a conservation lot. This cannot be for a conservation lot if you want to get $400,000, because this round is for recreation open space. So it would have to have some recreation purpose rather than a conservation easement, so that you could walk through the trails, so that you could put a canoe in the pond. You could have a big field there and call it an ultimate frisbee field, but it has to be couched in the terms of recreation.
Passive, open space. So let me, let me pose this question to you. So I'm not sure which lot it was, plot, plot 14, 008, or 007. I believe, I don't have the plans in front of me, that's why I did it. One of those lots, there was a residence there, and there was dialogue within all those minutes that they would have had to have taken eminent domain to get access off of Douglas Pike. So right now, if the Gold Estate, or the Gold Family, or Limited Life, whatever they are, if they wanted to sell 218 without selling lots, and I'm assuming, I could be wrong, maybe it's lot 254, but I'm thinking it's 07 and 08, if they didn't sell that for access, ingress and egress, they couldn't really build it over there. Wetlands only allow you one crossing. Is that the old rule with DEM? Could you make one crossing?
No, you have the, you have the concept plan.
The what?
You have the concept plan, which shows the floodplain and the hill, escarpes. You superpose that with the wetlands, and you're still going to get 23, maybe 22 lots out of the whole thing, because the floodplain areas tend to incorporate the wetlands anyway. So that plan would probably hold up pretty close to it. And the access, the access that they would have would be through another lot, so they'd have an in and out. They're not gonna have any, any dead ends longer than that one feet. It's a very well-conceived plan, given the fact of what he has. Our situation is that we're only getting the 124 acre lot, and it has access in fact through Matity Road just to the southwest of the house, house lot.
Mr. Erickson, if it's a floodplain, the way that people would enter, if that's a floodplain, then if it floods out, people aren't gonna be able to use it. Right?
Well, at the edge of a floodplain, it tends to be much, much less, and the middle of a floodplain, I don't think the floodplain actually encroaches on that way in, and neither does the, the wetland, unless it's gonna be delineated. The problem is that you can build a road in a floodplain. You can have a park in a floodplain. You can't have a conventional house in a floodplain.
I just want to make sure that if we have this as a park, people are gonna be able to go there and use it.
So access right now, if I may get back, because I know it's redundant, but I need to see this in my head. Will it be 20 foot wide, 22 foot wide? I know it's not gonna be that zone of 20...
50 foot right away.
50 foot right away?
Yeah, that's, that's assuming that his delineation shows what we see on the map. So worst case, maybe 40 feet, but probably good.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Mr. Erickson, is there any chance in next meeting you could bring, show the plans up on the screen of the last parcel that was for sale versus this one, and show us the, the...
Difference?
The entrance and where it would be, just so we can all be on the same...
Sure.
We have a DM, we have a projector in town somewhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice, beautiful screen. Now we could see.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Mike and Mike want to talk. It's up to you.
I want to ask if you would... Mr. Rapko. Mike Rapko, 25 Old Wood Road. Last week, I went to David Todd's office. There's a large folder under Old Wood Road. Be advisable that the council would look at the folder, because there's a lot of personal notes in there too, that I don't think the land was ever surveyed for wetlands. So when you look at the entrance on Matity Road, you have a stream going from Lake Bel Air, going through that access, and you've got wetlands. And technically, you have to have it surveyed for wetlands to determine what's left over where you want to go into that property. Paul is correct that the lot from Route 7 was removed from the sale this time around. Last time around was 154 acres. The assessment was just over $700,000. A lot of those lots that were taken off the table, some of them have good access, and so they're probably valuable. This 124 acreage is probably in the range of $300,000 or $400,000. I stopped in at David Dolch's office, the tax assessor. He wanted the council also to have a discussion with David Dolch about this type of parcel and the interest of developers to come into town to buy something like this. And I think it'd be good that you talk to him. I had a personal discussion, but I think it'd be better for you to do that personally, to talk to Mr. Dolch about this parcel and the value of the parcel. It, it's a nice parcel, but, you know, times have changed. What, it's unfortunate in North Smithfield, because of the wetlands, now we've become a tick-infested wetlands area. So I live in wetlands. It's full of ticks. So the more wetlands you have, the more ticks you're gonna get. There was a lot of articles in the paper recently, especially in North Smithfield, where a woman had serious Lyme disease. I've been through the property. There's a lot of tall grass. It's gonna, it's gonna be a problem, and it's gonna be liabilities. It's kind of iffy to stop thinking about open space, especially near wetlands right now. Maybe 10 years ago, when we didn't have this Lyme problem in the Northeast, maybe it was a better buy. But times have changed. There's gonna be a liability. You go on a property with a lot of tall grass, no matter what you do, and you're near wetlands, whether it's Tarkland Pond, or whether it's the stream from Lake Bel Air, there's gonna be issues. So, and then you've gotta worry about the upkeep of the property. I think the last time when we talked about buying it...
Management plan?
Yeah, you have to set aside, I don't know, $20,000, $30,000 for maintenance, to make sure it doesn't get trashed. So there's gonna be, there's other issues you're gonna look at. So maybe the next step that you should take is to go to David Todd's office and look at that folder, that one-inch folder. And there are personal comments from the last council, some of the military in that, in that folder, along with the DEM reports and the appraisal. And then you'll see, there's a lot of open issues, and I think you should address those issues before you jump in to spend the, the grant writer or the appraisal at this point.
Are you suggesting even the $5,000 for the appraisal should be backburned?
Well, I, I think after talking to David, David Dolch, I had, I got a different opinion about this whole property too. It's like, you know, it's, it's not, you know, I don't know if there's a lot of excitement about that property, but, you know, maybe the tax assessor, maybe it'd be good to talk to the tax, tax assessor first. He's got his reservations.
Mr. President, through you, to Acting Administrator. Do you think you could ask Mr. Dolch to give us some type of brief report? Would that make sense to you, Mr. Rapko, if we received...
Yeah, he could give you the appraisal, separate for parcels, so that you have that 124 acreage by itself. He can probably give you an appraisal of what's on the books. And then he can give you some comfort zone about developers coming in to buy large parcels like that. And also, I don't know, you have to go to the folder to look at the wetlands. I don't think there was a survey to mock off the wetlands, so you have to look at that stream that goes from Lake Bel Air across the street, goes through that frontage. Someone's gonna have to look at that.
Sure. So to my colleagues at Council, the deal was then, this is the new offer, and I guess I may be convoluting it, but if we were to look at plot 14, lot 007, 008, and lot 254, so the two lots, 7, 8, and 254, I know it's not on the table, but if things are negotiable, then we have guaranteed total, two points of interest and egress over there. I mean, I was for it the first time around until lots got pulled off the final purchase and sales agreement, so... I mean, I'm amenable. Mr. Gold can call me, and we can discuss this. You should call ours. I don't want to be the liaison on this one, be right up front. But it should be in public transparent, so everybody sees what's going on with this. So...
It makes sense to me, in real estate, everything's negotiable.
So, Mr. President, through you, to the Acting Administrator, if we could get some type of, Mr. Dolch, but include those, you know, tell them to look at 218, but we're about the other three that are no longer in the mix.
Is email reply good enough, or do I have to...
Yeah, the official, yeah, emails, but I think...
Could he possibly come to a next meeting, so we can...
Oh, you can, yeah, I can generate questions. Thanks, Counsel.
Would you, would you want the memo slash email before, to answer that as well?
Yeah, just so we can review it in another piece, so we can have some of the dialogue with him.
Yeah.
Just want to see if I have a comment.
If you just, if the only real deadline is the May 27 deadline for the application for the grant, and the council wouldn't consider purchasing the property without a grant, the only timeframe we're really under pressure is to find out how long it would take to write the grant. Because clearly, if you were gonna sign a purchase and sale agreement, you'd be subject to getting the grant. So really, it's about whether, if you didn't get the grant on the 27th, maybe you wouldn't even make an offer. So why not? I'm just saying, one thing you should keep in your timeframe is, if you're going to hire a grant writer, how long will that take to hire somebody and get, and how long they need to prepare this grant to file May 27th, otherwise... Although, although the names have changed, the protect, the forms have changed, the information's pretty much... Please, let's change. I don't know what that person's saying, I don't know. RFQ, I'm being told by the Acting Administrator, be an RFQ, so...
Time.
Time. That's all I'm, that's all I'm pointing out to you, time. May 27th is a little over 30 days away. Today's the 18th, right?
Don't we have a consultant that finds grants for us now?
We do, but I don't think that, I don't know that...
But that's an energy consultant.
Isn't he sitting in the audience right now?
No, he doesn't have to work. And I just, and I just throw that out, because it seems to me the council is focusing on, the planning department is focusing on the grant. And if the grant's the critical piece, how long is it gonna take to write it, how are you gonna pay to have it done, and how long will it take? And we feel that things are good, but if we find all sorts of information, the deadline for the grant goes, are we, are we accomplishing anything? I just point that out, time.
I don't think this can wait until May 2nd, which is your next meeting. I think you need to decide tonight whether you want to hand the $5,000 to the...
The appraisal or the grant writer?
The grant.
Grant writer.
Yeah.
That's, that's what that's mine.
So one, one grant is $5,000?
Grants. Ray Pendigas, head of DPW, is trying to do another grant for the house that's in front of Pacheco Park, so that we can have better ingress and egress, which is gonna be important, you know, for the future natural park.
National park in a couple of years still, yeah.
Right, and what's the other one? Didn't you say three?
No, two.
I couldn't hear you, Counsel.
Two, but they will be competing grants in the same program. So, you know, you may, you may want to pick one versus the other. I'll tell you, I'm not here trying to persuade you to go one way or the other. I happen to live in Lincoln, next to 90 acres of conservation lands. I just went through our financial time meeting, you know, getting a successful vote on rounding off 320 acres of contiguous land in the center of town. They spent a lot of money. That's my personal preference. You are a separate town. You have your own interests. I'm not here to persuade you one way or the other.
Did you say that the grant was competing for what Mr. Pendigas was looking for?
Yes.
So it's either that or this?
You might get both, but it's very rare.
I have a question, gonna comment. Question is, can you submit a grant application without foreign funds, without having a purchase and sales agreement signed for something you're gonna buy? Because that sounds a little odd to me.
For this grant, yes.
You can, without having a written purchase and sales, okay. Secondly, I'm gonna go back to the appraisal. I don't know why, you know, I think it'd be a great idea if somebody picked up the phone, called DEM, asked Michelle Sheehan there, who's in charge of these types of acquisitions, if she could give you the list of the appraisers that are approved by the federal government to do those appraisals. You're aware that there's a parcel of land in town that is being considered by DEM for purchase of agricultural rights, and that appraisal was recently done, and guidelines have changed for those appraisals, and they're no longer able to consider, you know, if you've got a subdivision approved for a 22-house lot subdivision, then, and those plans are on file and approved, they can consider that when they do the appraisal. If there's nothing approved, that's not given consideration. There's an estimate done. So again, for whatever you pay for that appraisal, you're gonna get a thousand times more for your money, dollar for dollar, if you get one that is approved by the federal government, when federal money is involved. And she can give you the list of appraisers, and you pick one from that list. So if you're gonna do it, please, I'm begging you, to get someone certified in that type of specific appraisal. You'll get, you won't pay more than the millionaire's worth.
Mr. President, through you, Mr. Erickson, is, is Jenny Flanagan Flanagan?
Yes.
Is she one of those on the list of DEMs?
I don't believe she is, but I will find out, sure.
Can I, through the Acting Administrator, can I ask you to request Mr. Erickson to contact, is it Michelle Sheehan?
Michelle Sheehan.
And Sheehan.
Sheehan.
Yeah, to, to get that list. I mean, if times are the essence, we gotta stop moving, yeah.
Well, you're here now for a reconsideration of the appraisal
Yep.
that you don't need to do the application. So what are we, what track are we on?
Advisors.
Huh?
Advisors.
Advisors?
Yeah, advisors. What track are we on?
I would advise you to be on the grant writer track.
And you...
And put the appraisal for, after you get the grant.
Okay, that was, we didn't discuss that last time, right? So if we go for the grant writer, you estimated $5,000, and you feel that it might be two grants for $5,000?
Yes.
Wanted Mr. Pendigas wants to put forward in this other one?
Yes. I would say not to exceed, because we may not, we may not need it.
Five, $5,000, okay, not to exceed.
So first, you would have to vote to reconsider, then you have to vote on the actual change, withdrawal of the appraisal, and then vote for the money for the grant writer.
So in your conversation... So in your conversation with the land trust last week, did they invite, did they offer up any potential grant writers, names up?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Erickson, can we actually vote on a grant writer, it's not on the agenda?
I know, I was just looking at that, I'm not so sure you can. It's, it seems to be pretty specific, this is a discussion vote on a reconsideration. This is on the, is that Rule 10?
Yeah.
Allows you to reconsider at the next meeting, which is why this is on the agenda now. This is really an opportunity to undo that vote. You can't, you could amend the agenda to discuss grant writing, which you couldn't vote on.
Although you did last time.
So, I certainly don't want to be accused of circumventing or trying to get around, but if we did discuss it and Mr. Erickson came up with a consensus.
We discussed it last night?
We did not.
No, what are you saying is, if we discussed it and it was an obvious consensus, then perhaps Jason would, you know, find $5,000.
Think about it, I'm not trying to lead you, I just wanted to show.
Say, ask the question again?
I'm sorry. Well, it's not on the agenda, so could we put it on the agenda under unanimous consent to discuss a grant writer?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so then we just put it on the agenda right now?
You can do that right now, you just can't vote on it.
What he's saying is, in the discussion, if everybody says informally, yes, I'm all for that, can Jason then find $5,000 off?
Good to see.
Mr. President.
Don't Mr. I don't shake your head.
I, I, I don't shake.
We're getting into muddy waters.
That's exactly, that's exactly what you're not supposed to be doing.
Sorry. Okay, because I don't want to do that, I'm certain you don't.
Currently, in the administration budget, there's $2,000 for a grant writer. That should get the ball rolling on this, until which time you appropriate the balance of the money. Is that an amenable thing?
I thought it was $10,000 for a grant writer.
It's only for two this year.
Okay. I think that was.
Correct, exactly, because that's been staffed.
Right. So we also have a hard time finding them, don't we?
Man. How come we're just now discussing the grant writer?
Yes.
If we knew, if we knew we're going to go for a grant or possibly go for a grant, whether it's the Gold property or the house in front of Chico, and the deadline is 35 or so days away, why are we just now discussing?
Because when I brought it up last time, you had a very quick move to do an appraisal. End of story. There's no reason why it can't be done through what Jason already has, and we started. But I was surprised by how quickly, I had no idea you wanted to go to appraisal when it happened so quickly. There it was.
Well, to find, you know, going back to your memo, shame on me, I was under the assumption with a possible grant from Rhode Island, yeah, I was assuming that you or someone in your office was going to write it, or somebody in town was going to write it. I guess if I hadn't asked that question tonight, would we have known about who was going to write the grant? I was under the assumption, if I had not spoken to Dr. Shumblin, she said that she doesn't have time to write it, I said, so who's writing it? She goes, I don't know. So that caused me to ask that question tonight for clarification. So now we're at the point where, again, I want to apologize, maybe I should not have assumed that because you wrote it that way, that you were going to write the grant. And you don't have time, maybe, I'm not picking, Bob, I want you to say, I'm not picking.
As I said before, we're saving the town $47,000 by doing the comp plan in hours.
Thank you, thank you.
And we have all kinds of apros requirements that we never had before. You know, I have to deal with my planning board and the whole issue of how we got the last planning board member. There are a number of side distractions here that are overwhelming, okay? So that's where it stands right now. What's your pleasure?
Well, we can't vote on the grant writer, so what are we going to do? We put it on the next agenda, Mr. Erickson, the totals is taking too much time. Unless, Silas Eliosi can figure something out. Mr. President, sorry, I can speak.
You want to just trail us then and work on the agenda when we think about this? I mean, at this point, you could amend the agenda, put it on the agenda, make it the last item or something, I don't know.
To discuss a grant writer?
Yeah.
But we won't be able to vote.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I don't see it, and the item is a reconsideration.
Yeah.
Can we?
With reconsideration, was the original item, I don't have the old agenda, is the old agenda just a discussion of the Gold property or is it a discussion of just the appraisal of the Gold property?
Do we know if your old agenda had something?
It was a discussion in general.
Was it?
It was, it was a discussion in general on the Gold property, just to get a consensus if we wanted to purchase it, that's what.
That's why the appraisal came as such a surprise. But look at it this way, in the normal course of events, the town administrator would make a decision as to whether we wanted to explore this path. You know, when we did the energy grant applications, it wasn't going to the town council and saying, hey, do you want to do this? I mean, you, you see these applications and you do them with the stuff you have in your line item. But here, it's, you know, much more, you know, problematic.
Are you saying that the town administrator, acting administrator can move forward and go out to seek a grant writer for this, without coming before 10,000?
We can seek a grant writer for anything.
Well, then that solves our problems.
Yes.
Okay, to confirm, Mr. Eliosi, you think that's right?
If there's a line item budget, that your council approved the grant writer and there's funding in that account, then you.
And that's approved in the budget 20 minutes ago.
Yes.
I agree with that, I agree with that, but then you don't need your vote?
That's correct.
The question you were asking is, do you need to vote on it? If you need to vote on it, you'd need a properly advertised and posted item. Or you can't vote?
So Jason would have the authority to go ahead and start talking about grant writers?
Yeah, if you get the $2,000.
But Councilon NATO, being the techie that she is, brought up the last council agenda. It's on the new business, number eight, new business. F, discussion by council, vote or other action on possible gold forest acquisition. Mr. Erickson didn't say anything about it in the notes.
All right, so if you're reconsidering that item, then you can bring it up.
Yeah.
And then I, then I would, because you're basically going back to that item on the agenda. When you're reconsidering, you're going back to that item.
Okay, so we're going to reconsider, we're going to, if I may, would it be appropriate to say, even though he does not need the authority, but to say to Jason, yeah, the authority to look for a grant writer, of one of the DEM listed?
My word somewhere?
Michelle Sheehan.
Michelle Sheehan, yeah.
But would you not want?
Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
We had Jenny Flanagan, Michelle, it's an acquisition.
It says acquisition on this one, despite what it said last time, they chose to go to the appraisal process and now are here to reconsider the vote on the appraisal of the Gold property. That has to be done, and it's not clear whether you can do the other stuff. You're not going back to reconsider the whole, the whole item last time.
Okay.
Without voting on getting a grant writer, can't we?
Jason.
Hold off, to take care of this item, can we just hold, so the reconsideration of the appraisal would be to wait on the grant writer for the appraisal? Okay.
So grant writer doesn't do the appraisal?
No, wait on the grant writer to get everything done before we do the appraisal.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Roseanne, Councilon NATO.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. President?
I think that works.
Through you, I'm going to make a motion to reconsider, if I want to use the exact wording, discussion by council, voter action, reconsideration of vote, appraisal of Gold property. I'm going to make a motion to reconsider that.
Second.
And then we'll come in and we'll vote. Yeah, but first, we have a motion and second, Mr. President.
Yes, yeah, but motion by council, Councilon Zelinski, second by council, and NATO for reconsideration. Is any further discussion? Karen, I'm now, clerk role, go, go, please.
Ms. Alz, yes, NATO, Mr. Sol, Mr. Zelinski.
Yes.
Mr. Boucher.
Yes.
All right, so still on the topic, Mr. President, for redundancy, Jason, you're going to have Mr. Erickson check this out, and we're going to get moving forward, yeah?
Yep.
Thank you, very, Mr. Erickson, thank you.